You. We have anybody on it. Three numbers.
Oh, two, one of them.
Yeah.
Welcome, everybody. Nice to see you all. We have like mood lighting going on, but we'll deal with that. Today is Monday, March fourth. And it's a special meeting because we're meeting at three o'clock. So first we have your presentation. Jacob Green and Associates. I know you'll do your introduction or this city manager well. Are we taking public open? Where is our city clerk? To take some. Fine, yeah, right now. Yeah. Okay, so if there's any members of the public that would like to speak on this items, I'm looking in the room. Not seeing any of those public comment, and turn it over to our city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be here to introduce you to who you've already met, but to Jacob Green and to Greg Deveraux, who are going to lead this open session. So I'm just gonna turn it right over to him.
Very good. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Council. Thank you so much for having us. It's been waiting. Nice to be back here with your city and with all of you. We'll start with the introductions. I'll have Greg introduce himself first.
So Greg Deveraux, forty years in state and local government, primarily local government, came up through redevelopment and housing. And then became City Manager in Fontana for four years, Ontario for twelve and a half, and then finished as CEO of San Bernardino County.
And Council, Mayor and Council, I also have Nicole Beach on the line from our team. She's been working with your staff on work planning as part of the strategic planning process. And then I'm Jacob Green. I did eighteen years in the public sector and police fire development, city manager's office. And then about six years ago, went to the private sector to do this. And now our team is about thirty members strong and representing lots of different aspects of local government. And Greg and I, in particular, this is what we love to do is work with councils and city managers and executive teams on local governance. So thanks again for having us back. Really appreciate it. Nice to be with your city. So today's presentation is really all about building alignment. All of the work that we do with councils and executive teams and communities is about building alignment in the organization. When we talk about alignment, it really starts with the community. The community has a lot of expectations of what the government and your local government can deliver. And those expectations are channeled to the elected officials, to the mayor and the city council that determines the goals and objectives for the organization. Those goals and objectives are then put into the budget. So the budget should reflect those goals and objectives. And then that direction is given to the city manager in terms of what the city manager needs to execute and implement on behalf of the mayor and the city council. The city manager then worked with the executive team to accomplish that. And the executive team oversees the staff and the process. And so really, it's all about creating alignment all the way through those various levels of the organization. And what Greg and I help organizations work with, and every organization has areas that can be tweaked and enhanced, improved in order to make sure that there's good alignment, the organization is operating at its highest functioning potential. I like to say, especially when we're in a community like this, that there's absolute, we're not here because there's anything wrong with your organization. In fact, for San Rafael, kind of the exact opposite. You are a very high functioning organization. You've done a lot of investment in this process of building alignment and setting your vision and your goals and objectives. But at the same token, my car, the analogy I like to use is my car. I love my car. It's great. There's no problem with it. But every five thousand miles or so, I take it off the road. I get it checked A to Z, get the oil changed, and put it back on the road so it can continue operating as a high functioning vehicle. And the same is for organizations, although you're one of the very few percentage-wise, very few cities, counties, and special districts actually take the time to do what it is you're doing, just to make sure that your high functioning organization stays as a high functioning organization. So kudos to the mayor and council and the team for investing in this process. And at the end of the day, why are we investing this time? And why are we trying to focus on building alignment? Because everybody in this room wants to make a lasting impact on your community. Whether you're an elected official or a member of the executive teams or staff, you got into this business of local government because you wanted to make a positive impact. And these are the things that can help us make a positive impact successfully together. Okay, so on today's agenda, we're going to talk about the system for local government excellence. What that system looks like and how we can operate within the tenants of that system for best performance. Second, we're going to talk about the process of building alignment and sort of the nuts and bolts of what's involved in building alignment throughout the organization. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps of where we go from here with the mayor, city council, and the staff. So we'll start with the system. As we talk about elements of the system, I just want to first give some additional recognition to the city. You've already invested a lot of your time and thought into building a best practice system. The the guidance that you put together in the city council guidelines for working within districts, as you well know, has many of the elements that Greg and I will be discussing with you today. You've certainly thought about all the different areas of alignment that need to be built. You did in the context of transitioning to districts, but really you've addressed governance as a whole in this document. So Greg and I appreciate that you have a reference document and something that we can remind ourselves of as we go along in implementing the process. So the system, our top governance fundamentals for organizational excellence, these are some best practice that we'll talk about as we try to figure out and make sure that we're working within the same organizational structure. So first is that the importance of operating within the council manager form of government. And not to dive into history, but I'm a total nerd in this area, but you know, I like reflecting every once in a while about why we find ourselves in this council manager form of government. Early nineteen hundreds where communities were struggling with the lack of professional city administrators or professional administration. And there was conflicts that were developing between the electeds and the community. And there was this need to create a system, first point the city manager council plan in which we could clearly define the roles of the individuals in the system, so we could work together in a complimentary way, respecting each other's roles, but honoring the differences. And you know, a hundred years later now, these role differences and these role uniqueness, they still exist. And sometimes in communities, we forget how important it is to talk about the very distinct role. So the first element in in looking at the council manager form of government, really Greg, I'll ask you to touch on how important is that staff understand that role, the elected official, and and the mutual benefit that's derived each one step.
Well, you all know this, but I often remind staffs that you are the elected representatives of the people. And they have chosen you to determine the direction in the city and to allocate the resources in the city. What we as staff, I will tell you where we fall short very often is that we don't always understand that the community has a very different relationship with you than they have with us. You know, we may live in the community, we may be members of the community, but they didn't choose us. They chose you. And because of that, they talk to you and tell you things in ways very different than they talk to staff. And they expect you to do something with the information that they provide. So it's really important that staff understand you don't have the same relationship with the community that we have. You have a very different relationship.
On number two in the council versus council member authority, the the importance of number two is that a council member, and this especially comes down to giving authority, direction can only be given to the staff of an organization by the body, by the council body at a duly noticed meeting, at a publicly duly noticed meeting. An individual council member, as the mayor and council are all aware of, but always repeating in these conversations, an individual council member cannot give a direction to a staff member because that direction hasn't come from the body and it hasn't been given or decided at a duly noticed meeting.
With the public having the opportunity for input into that direction.
On third, you want to cover district versus citywide respects.
Well, district, I didn't, I started in the city with districts, but at a very low level. So I didn't work with districts again because they weren't, they hadn't grown to the extent that they have recently in California because of the change in the law. Working with the Board of Supervisors. And in the county, given the breadth of responsibilities that counties have and the various funding sources, it's easy, especially, I happen to work in a very large geographic area. And so it's very easy for the supervisors to be out in their field offices many miles away. Twenty thousand, twenty miles. It's a very, very large jurisdiction. And it's very easy to default into thinking, well, I should get the our fair share for my district. Regardless of what the overall priorities are. And so we had many conversations about the role of the district supervisor being to express the needs and issues of the district to the body as a whole, so that when the resource allocation is taking place, that it goes to the highest and best use, not, forgive the phrase, but good old boy, hey, support mine else, but for the tourists, as you reference in your guidelines, or thinking that the highest and best use is just a divided five.
A number four, council inquiries versus direction to staff. This is an area that's quite a challenge because I can, I can speak as a former staff member that when you have an interaction with the council member, mayor, council member, you know, it's, it sets a certain level of a little bit of anxiety and you want to deliver and you want to perform for a mayor and council and get stuff done. But again, as we discussed earlier, there needs to be a distinction and understanding in the system between what is okay and not okay. And again, I would point the entire organization back to your document, sorry, back to your document on the council district because you have exceptional and what we feel is best practice language in that document pertaining to the importance of understanding the influence that you can accidentally have as a council member making an inquiry. And so generally, our best practice that we share with councils and organizations is anything that a member of the public is able to ascertain or inquire about is appropriate for a mayor or council member to inquire. Now, copying the city manager and making sure the city manager is in the loop is also very important because you wear a few different hats. You you wear a few different hats in that process. And the city manager may be aware of a little bit of a bigger context and picture of what's taking place. But also, when 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 that interaction crosses the line between what a normal member of the public would be able to request or report and and crosses that boundary, that, again, speaking to your guidance document, would would be crossing the the boundaries of the roles and creating role ambiguity. And oftentimes, it can be perceived by the staff member that the council member or mayor is giving direction. And that's what can't happen unless it's by the body at a duly noticed meeting. And so almost every organization is challenged in this particular area. And and it's, you know, because we have great relationships and we work together and sometimes we're in the same communities. But when we're in the construct of the council manager form of government, these are some important reminders about the roles in which we play in our organization.
Well, and it's, it's, I worked in a community where the many of the council members had grown up in that community. Many of the workers in the community were working for the city and they had relationships. And many times when we had that kind of issue come up, it was not, the council member did not at all intend or perceive that they were giving direction, but the staff member took it as direction. And you recognize that, again, I mean, we applaud the document, the thoroughness of it, the understanding of it. But it's always just good to keep in mind that that though you may not intend it, it still may be perceived. The other thing that I want to emphasize is, and we talked about this with exec staff before you got here, that it is absolutely appropriate for a council member to transmit information that is the same as information a resident could have called and transmitted the same information as a pothole. It's wrong if staff then takes it and says, oh, we better fill that pothole tomorrow, even though that really is about three months from now is where it will get in the list. You know, neither, neither they or the council or should be given preference in the process. I always like to say that public service is a privilege. It doesn't make any of us privileged. Just because I, when I was a city manager, said, oh, yeah, there's a pothole on my street or my neighbor has this problem with, they should not jump the line and and get that fixed right then, just because I brought it to somebody's attention.
All right. So the process of building alignment, there's three elements in the process of building alignment. And again, you're quite far along and advanced in this process, which we don't see all that often. But the three elements are mission, vision, and values. And then step two, creating those goals, objectives, and strategies. And we'll talk about that differentiation, what those are in just a minute. And then most importantly, this is the the big gap that exists in most organizations, taking those goals and objectives prioritized by the council and putting them into the budget and and creating funded priorities for the organization. Now, just as a little bit of a review for everyone, San Rafael already has the policy focus areas in your strategic planning document, and then you drill down one. Oh, and a little disclaimer that this is not about changing any policy focus areas today. And I may as well say that in your goals and objectives that have been adopted by the council today is also not about creating any new goals and objectives. The council was very clear that you've been through this process, you've adopted your two-year goals, you're squared away, you're solid. And and that was certainly the feeling of the council in our interviews with the city council, Greg and I. So you have, you have your goals, objectives. Now, once we get beyond that, things can get a little bit confusing. And so it's worth in most of our organizations to talk a little bit about the differentiation here because ultimately staff will be coming back to you with some of the work plans and strategies. And we want you to know what you're looking at. So the goal is a short statement of the desired outcome to be accomplished over a long period of time formed from the vision. Greg and I like spending most of our time on the vision. You have mission, vision, values. Mission good tells you what you're doing today. Value is great, tells you what kind of values it embraces organization. But the council's vision is really what the staff needs. And we had conversations with each of you on the vision that you see for the future of the community. The objective is what the city will do to meet those goals. And then the strategies, or some cities call them tactics, are how each objective will be addressed, the initiatives. And as many of the council members also indicated us the desire to understand how they're going to be measured, how we can actually see progress on these entities. Just a little bit of an example, your goal D right now is public assets. You have an objective regarding the canal swing bridge. And then you have your strategy is the transportation experience RFP. So these goals and objectives are then placed into work plans. And those work plans have all the measurable elements and the tactics and the strategies needed to execute your goals and objectives. So looking at your community's process and where things are, just to align the twenty, as as was mentioned earlier, you've already done a lot of the heavy lifting to create those twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five goals and objectives. You established those in spring twenty twenty-three. The city initiated a work plan pilot with goal number D and with your public works director, April, and her team and our team were currently working on the work plans for all the objectives that are underneath goal number D, so that the city can see if this is a process and approach that works for the mayor and council. Today, we're building alignment, including expectations and criteria solidified for the future performance review of the city manager. We'll get into just a few minutes of how we'll be doing that and why we'll be doing that in closed session through the guidance of your city attorney and our team. That's today. The next step, you'll have a goals and objective staffs report and the pilot work plan adoption May twenty twenty-four. We always recommend, and this could be June too, kind of see how things, it's a little aggressive. We like to, we usually like to, you know, under promise and over deliver, but we'll we'll see on this. So we, we always recommend that the work plans come back to the council for adoption. And and that's a little bit unique, but the reason that we recommend that is so that everyone's aligned, again, on the same sheet of music in terms of what's being delivered when. So that if, you know, if the council member says, well, wait a minute, I thought this project, we adopted it as a goal and an objective, I thought it was going to be finished this year. The word plans allow you to see exactly what quarter and what year the work will be finished, subject to whatever circumstances are taking place. And we actually have a whole section, as April knows, in the work plan where we outline things that could potentially lead to delays or things coming off track. Oh, I don't know, like global pandemics or something like that, right? So the word plans allow the council to say, yeah, this meets our expectations of delivery time. And if not, it allows for good conversation between the city manager and the council regarding those expectations. After that, you'll have your budget adoption in June twenty twenty-four, and then there'll be a mid-cycle priority setting review workshop. I have it loosely twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, an opportunity for the council to check back in and see if anything needs to be reviewed in terms of the process. I just realized. Oh, I skipped a whole bunch of really exciting and no one was going to say anything. Okay. We'll just go back to a couple of the the system elements, just to make sure we we wrap some of the important things about the system. So we'll go to the fives. Everything is good. I apologize, Mayor and Council for that. I was just so excited about this material. I just couldn't wait to give it to you. We'll go to number five, the everything is good challenge, Greg.
So in the United States government, top to bottom, we face the everything is good challenge. And the everything is good challenge is people don't come forward and ask for bad things. They ask for things that are good. More police, more fire, more paramedics, better paved roads, more parks. Those things are good. So it's really important when you're allocating resources to do so with complete comparative context in terms of all of the jurisdictions' responsibilities and needs and financial condition. Without that, it's almost, it's very hard, almost impossible to say no to the good thing that someone is requesting. So if you can't tell them something better, you know, we want funding for a new baseball league. But the real issue in the community is thefts have skyrocketed. We need three more police officers to combat this proliferation of of thefts. So having something that gives them that context is it doesn't mean they don't want the baseball league. But it does mean they can understand the decision better. And then.
Councilwoman has some doubts about him.
Yeah, just because they're they're not necessarily going to agree with the way we balance things and they're not going to understand.
Well, I think I think it depends on what the 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 context is. I mean, if I've been in many situations where you had aging water and sewer systems. Now, it was fortuitous that at the same time that we wanted a major increase because they hadn't had one for twelve years, I had just come into the community. And they were stealing operational funds, you know, maintenance funds, replacement funds to operate. The city of LA, fortunately, for for us, not for them, experienced a series of waterline breaks where it was undermining the streets and cars were dropping where it was undermining the streets and cars were dropping twenty, thirty feet into the ground and and it was easier for people to understand that it really was a priority. It may not, they may not have wanted uh a water rate increase, but they didn't want, they wanted water in their houses.
So number six, I, I, I got excited and I talked about already, but six is basically in the system, um the importance of setting those goals and objectives, so that we can be again, making sure that we're using resources according to the council's priorities and the council's focus. Number seven, I already spoke to, which is making sure that that then gets translated into budget. And finally, number eight, uh Greg will touch on how important is that we keep in mind evolution, not revolution.
That the work that you have already done, um the mayor uh has, has said several times to us, um this is about uh creating a stable future. And the work that you've done in terms of outlining the goals and objectives, outlining that how the, the council was going to work with staff and and with one another is all part of for as future councils come on, creating stability and continuity. And those of us that have been in government for a long time know that the more continuity, the more stability you have, um usually, the higher performing the organization and the better the, the service levels. And I explain that as what you're trying to create is evolution, not revolution. I was in a jurisdiction that built a, a major sports arena, a minor league sports arena, but it was still a hundred fifty million dollars. Uh I came with that organization, they had already been working on it for two years. I was there twelve and a half years, it didn't get done until year ten. At any time the way, along the way, new council people come on and said, no, we don't want a sports arena. Millions of dollars in terms of time, effort, and money would have been wasted. So what we seek as communities is being in line with what the community wants and then sticking to it. And not that that can't change, but it is way better if it evolves than a new group comes in and says, we're throwing all of this out and starting up.
Not only is evolution, not revolution, important for the community's health, moving forward and the stability of the community, they were, but it's also, I can speak from the staff's perspective. It's one thing that was so refreshing in our meetings with each of you individually, um where you said, no, we have our goals and objectives, we have our projects and programs. We just kind of need to focus on the work planning side and the measurement side and and the fine tuning. Evolution, not revolution is important for your staff, because you can imagine trying to work in an organization in which there is no roadmap for what we're going to focus on. And there's constantly huge swings in what the priorities are going to be of the council. And so uh this also benefits your ability to attract and retain uh staff members in an organization of stability and focus. Now I can go, this stuff I was uh real excited about, which is, so finishing up, you'll, you'll, you'll get your update. And speaking of other plans, here's the work plan. So again, we're working with your public works department on uh goal number D. This is what your work plans are going to look like. There's two elements. One is sort of a, a roadmap gap chart that you're used to seeing. And the second is those strategies and tactics for each of the objectives. What departments are primary, what departments are secondary? A really important point was made earlier on by your executive team, actually two important points by your team that I think is worth mentioning for the council as you prepare to review the uh work plans on goal D. The first is that these work plans are not intended to demonstrate for the council all of the business as usual work and all the things that are being done by your staff that are routine daily tasks. And so when you are evaluating the work plans and when you are saying, wait a minute, I want this done three quarters earlier, that's, that's great, that's important. It's important to know as a body what the expectations are and have that conversation. But also keeping in mind that you don't want to create a staff team that feels they have to justify their existence by putting all the routine business as usual tasks that they're also responsible for every single day on a work plan. That's not what the work plan is for. The work plans are really to reflect your goals and objectives for the big projects that are outside of your daily operating budget um requirements.
And that's uh, we touched on, on this quite a bit. Um that does put a premium uh in your budget discussions on making sure that the council is aware that often the goals and objectives, not always, but often they're kind of on top of that base. And what is that base? I mean, what's, what are the number of, of public records requests that your city clerk is getting? How much time and effort does that take? How much cost is there just to support that mandated function that you don't have control of?
And then, once uh a, an organization completes work plans and has a council that adopts, approves in one way or another those work plans, and now we have alignment between the council and the city manager and the staff. The next element of that, and your, and your city is doing great work, as we understand right now, on, on dashboards and looking at how they can be used, is to create some sort of very easy way for everybody internally to be able to see the progress and the successes. One of the things that the council has, has mentioned to Greg and I is your, your recognition that the staff is doing really great work and you want the community to understand the accomplishments of this team. And by team, I, I say the entire organization. Dashboards are a great way, because you can either allow those dashboards to be publicly viewed or take certain information that makes sense and have those publicly facing, so you can demonstrate to the community some of the great things that the mayor and the council are getting done um as a result of the good work being implemented by the staff. So dashboards, we see as sort of the final phase of this alignment building process. And with that, we'll have uh Greg share a little bit about the next step in this process in terms of going into closed session today. Then we're going to ask your city attorney to provide us with some additional insights. He's been incredibly instrumental for us in helping us uh navigate and make sure that we take full uh value out of this process. Um and then we'll certainly open it up to Mayor and Council for any questions.
As you know, uh we're uh in closed session today under the Public Employee Performance Evaluation City Manager. Now, the purpose today is not the evaluation of the city manager. Uh but the, the city uh attorney um uh has given us clear uh indication that he agrees that the setting of the criteria for the city manager's performance on which she will be evaluated at your next evaluation is also appropriate for closed session. Now, um in many instances, we're going in to those closed sessions. Um uh and um the, the council is discussing um uh not only the expectations, but kind of the, the larger work programs. As Jacob has indicated, we're not here to talk about priorities, we're not here to talk about goals and objectives. But to make sure that the manager understands the expectations you have in terms of how you are, how she and the organization are fulfilling uh or implementing those. San Rafael is not an organization that needs our help or anybody's help doing goals and objectives. Um uh where we think that we may be able to add value is in refining um making sure that both of you are in agreement and have an understanding of what each other means by the, the direction that you're giving for the criteria that you're setting up. What we often find is that um Christine used an example of when we were talking with the exec staff that um well, and Jacob referenced it. Well, you know, yeah, uh I, I thought we, you were going to deliver that this year. And the manager's thinking, that's a three-year project. We, we did the design this year. You know, we did one step of it, but that's all that could have been accomplished with the budget we had and then the timeframe we had. So just making sure, once again, that they're real and true alignment. And with that.
Thank you. Uh I have uh met and spoken uh with Greg and
I'm sorry, to turn to that, you're up for a second. So before you go into that, is there an opportunity for the council just to ask any clarifying questions of the presentation?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and we have some, yeah, and we can summarize next step.
So I just want to make sure that that works out with what you're gonna say.
I'm gonna be two minutes.
Yeah, then we could
I just want to make sure, because I think that's an okay, sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh I just wanted you all to know that I have met with these two, uh Greg and Jacob and Christine as well uh several times now. We had Jason person today, uh we were meeting on Zoom previously. And um I was excited when I heard about the plans for city manager performance evaluation, because it's something new. And I've been to uh kind of privileged of uh being present for sixteen city manager performance evaluations in this city as well as others in other cities uh that I've served. And they've tended to all kind of be the same, and they're not bad. Um but uh without revealing the contents of closed session, I can tell you that there's been a certain pattern to them that's been um what I've observed over the years. There's information that the city council receives prior to the uh performance evaluation that I think is very useful. Typically, the city manager prepares a pretty extensive report typically on achievements of the year, so that the council's clear and is reminded of all the many things that have occurred. Uh Santa fell, there's been a tradition of the three sixty uh review, which I think has been more helpful inputs in the process. Um and that's similar, I think, to what the other cities do. Then, in the closed session, the city manager's present, the uh uh written work products discussed to a degree, and there's a discussion, you know, with manager present. Then the manager leaves, and then the city council each uh talk about their observations. And I exercised the skills that I learned this summer before my freshman year uh at San Paul High School in a very, that's simple, I took typing, it was over at Tarryland High. Um because I can type really fast, and I just basically court for the entire meeting to the best I can. And then um turn that into a memo that gets, you know, reviewed on an attorney-client privilege basis and then ends up in the city manager's um personnel file. The discussion that happens is always great, and I think the, the, the product at the end is good. But what I felt when I heard the description from Greg and Jacob that sounded like a neat new uh way to think about doing it is that if there is a metric and criteria that are adopted to guide the council in its evaluation of the city manager and the, the, the city as well, because really the city's being evaluated, you know, when the city manager's being evaluated, that it would help guide the city council's conversation and kind of give them more to uh look to and hang on to to help um them think about how they want to uh uh ultimately, you know, decide whether the performance was whatever on, on the scale. I'm present for all of these, I'll be present again today. Uh and you know, my job in closed sessions is always to make sure that the laws follow. Um and I also confirmed with our consultants that, that, and I was joking with them. It's not like a appliance that we're buying that we gotta like do it this way for the next twenty years until it breaks. Um if we don't like it, we can do it another way next year, or if we do like it, we can do it again. And I think the idea is that um there's a hope that it will prove useful and that um it'll be something, you know, that we can go upon in future years. So I just want the city council, executive team, and who else might be listening to uh this tape someday, that um, you know, because we've done it one way for so many years, and we've always done it in the third quarter, and I assume we'll again be conducting the actual review in the third quarter like we always have. Um that uh, you know, after these gentlemen were kind enough to take the time to walk me through it, I um, you know, endorsed it, yeah, let's, let's give it a try and, and give it a whirl and see how it goes.
And with that, Mayor and Council, just in terms of the next steps, just so that we're all aligned um on the next steps, today, closed session will be our real next step after the mayor council questions or comments. We'll bring the pilot uh work plan back for council approval after that's finished, May-June-ish, somewhere around there. And then you have that mid-cycle check-in on goals and objectives, so you can focus on evolution, not revolution uh in looking at how progress is being made. And with that, Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Turner, my colleagues, for any questions as well as comments, and I'll start with the vice mayor. Go ahead.
Well, yes, thank you. Obviously, what has presented for us today is the culmination of a lot of time from everyone. Thank you for facilitating uh collection of that. Um what I will, I don't have any questions. What I will say is that I think that um what this, when I think about the word system that you just, I'm fascinated by systems. I, I look at the city of San Rafael, one of the reasons why I chose to serve in this role is to how do we continually create perfection in our system? I like the, the term of, of evolution, not revolution. And I also like that, and we, we named a different stakeholder very early on. Each of those um, and if you, as you break it down further, have expectations. And I like any system that can respond and set and respond to expectations in a way that's transparent and um well, as fast as possible. But, but I, I appreciate all the work that's going into this, and I'm looking forward to uh pilot and next steps.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Um really no questions, I'm looking forward to the next conversation. Uh I think for me, the takeaway was also evolution, not revolution. But the everything is good. I mean, that's something I think we come across all the time. And I know on the school board, when I was there, it was, there was rarely bad ideas. There were a lot, there was a lot of passion. And, and so it's how do you balance all those pieces? Um and so, but I like the term everything is good challenge. Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Bushy.
Um a comment then a question. Um like, the comment is that I think I'm a, a, a little bit um uh not in entire agreement on evolution and, and not revolution, because I just want to keep the revolution card, because sometimes you need a revolution. It's not every day, but you just, that has to be an, an, an option. Sometimes you have to do that. So that's my comment, my question. On the process that you're laying out, having goals, objectives, and um basically trickling them down to, to like everything that we do is something that we follow over to MSA. Um and one of the key, uh the Central污染ation Agency, I'm on the board. And um one of the um real nuts and bolts things um that we do, everything that comes before the board, every proposal ha- is linked back to a goal and objective. Um and then that way, they're all, it's all mapped through the whole year. And then it's it works, it, it works great.
Once you do the budget, the budget should have the, the goals and objectives, the performance measures in the budget, and every single staff should, report should say which goals, which objectives, this action, if approved by council, is you're trying to achieve.
Agreed.
Yes, and is that going to be part of your proposal or?
Well, it's clearly how, so I've always operated, but uh, you know, uh we could certainly talk about that, because I think it does help show how it's all aligned. And it, you know, it also counters an odd argument that sometimes comes up. When an organization is aligned, um it's, oh, well, the city manager's in control, because uh, I mean, every time the city manager puts something up, the council approves it. And you have to explain to people, well, that's because the city manager is reflecting the council's direction correctly. It's not that they're following, it's, she's following them, not the other way around.
Yeah, and seem as a textbook case, five, five of every, you know, unanimous votes, just right down the line. The meanings are very orderly, very expected, everything is on track. So, yeah, I, I, I'm a believer.
Thank you, Councilmember Mike.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um I don't have any questions either. Um I think uh tagging on that, I think um the more clarity and transparency we have about the process and the, the better we align it with uh the goals and objectives, then we can communicate. And I think sometimes um, you know, um our neighbors understand better the way that we make choices when we communicate with them um based on the goals and objectives and the timeline. So if we can say, this is a priority too, but right now, we're working on this, we're working on that. And we communicate, then it's easier for them to understand, okay, you cannot do everything at once. And we communicate then, is it easier for them to understand, okay, you cannot do everything at once? And I think this really provides a lot of clarity. Um that will be very helpful for for us as we enter the community.
Thank you, and I'll just build on what's already been said. First, I just want to appreciate all the executive team. I mean, when I look around the room and those both at the table and those sitting there, like, this is the team. So when stuff needs to happen in San Rafael, this is the room full of people that are here making happen. And that's pretty awesome. And it can also be overwhelming because, you know, there's not a hundred people in this room, right? Two dozen. So um so thank you to the executive team, to staff for your willingness to evolve. The evolution, revolution, I don't know, those words are super loaded, I'm a word, wordy person, so I'm gonna say evolving. We are an inflection point, we're evolving as a city. And we have the right people in the room, we have the right people on the dimes, we have the right people uh supporting the work of the communities and supporting the council. And I'm really excited about it. I believe, and and I don't know if it's Jacob or Greg said this, but the way that we did things twenty years ago, fifty years ago, even ten years ago. We can't fall back on that anymore. So how are we going to be brave and courageous to do the changes that are needed? And that's what this is really about at the underlying, and I really appreciate the nuts and bolts. That's why Jake, Green, Greg and Beach, who's who's listening in, that's why they're here helping, is for the nuts and bolts. But the vision, and I feel really grateful that the five of us here, we really believe in it. And this is what needs to be done now, so twenty years from now, when we're all on a beach somewhere or tired or done whatever, that we can say. San Rafael is continuing to move forward with the framework and the foundation, the strategies that we put in place. So I couldn't be more excited about today. Um and I really want to give, uh again, close by just appreciating the staff, because change is hard. When we do something and, and I'll say it, me too, when I get used to doing something all the time, that feels comfortable. And to be willing to step back and say, is this the right way? Let me examine it, let me bring curiosity and possibly change it. We can do that, we have the courage to do it. So I'm very excited, we're in this together, the room full of people, as well as the teams of which you all manage, we're in this together. So that just very, very thankful, appreciate the city attorney providing that clarity. And hopefully we have more conversations. We'd love to come to a director's meeting, no, just kidding. Hang out all the time, we don't, so um so thank you. And we will now uh read this, do you want me to read all three? Just a top line, oh, okay, we're going to close sex session on the public employee performance evaluation, city manager. Right, well, all three. Top line of all three, okay. Conference for legal counsel anticipated litigation, third one conference with labor negotiations, negotiators. Thank you all, and I'll say this, thank you, thank you. We'll have a little transition topic.